We'll call. We'll call me as you order. Jim Spanos is out. Josh Nard is not here. Mark Herman is not here. Miles is here. OJ's here and Steve Nosworthy is here. So in the absence of the chair and the vice chair, we'll need a motion to appoint someone as chair for tonight's meeting.
I'll nominate Paul Boden to chair tonight's meeting.
Let's look at it. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Yeah, so first order of business is, I guess it will just be OJ and Steve and myself on this first order of business because Miles is a butter.
He just dropped out.
Dropped out. So. First order of business. Application for minor subdivision by real line adjustment in four adjacent lots of Edible Bryant Avenue. Right away in Luan Lane right away reconfiguring them also in further subdivision one of four lots into three lots. And can owner Thomas P Tremble, trustee Thomas P Tremble, revocable trust of two thousand and six, Dale Box, thirty-five months in Hampshire. So, these, a subdivision. Proposal includes following boundary line adjustment and transfers. Area one. Portion of nineteen Luan Lane, map one seventeen lot seventeen be transferred to map one seventeen lot nineteen. Original area of point six two acres changes to point four six acres. Area two, portion of Luan Lane. Wow, what was number Halloween?
Means land without a building.
Land without a building, map seventeen lot eighteen to be transferred to map seven, one seventeen lot nineteen. Original area of point five eight acres changes to point five four acres. C, area three. Portion of thirty and thirty-one of Bryant Avenue, map one seventeen lot twenty-five. We transferred to map one seventeen lot nineteen, original area of one point eight acres changes to one point four one acres. And D, Luan Lane.
Lo.
Lo.
Which means land without building.
Land without a building, map one seventeen lot nineteen. One point one five acres, original area of one point one five acres to changes to one point six seven acres. Proposal B, further subdivision proposed divides lot, one lot into three lots. Two new lots will be created. Improvements from to Luan Lane right away to be fifty foot right away. The lots and extensions of municipal water and sewer lines until there's will be required. The remainder of thirty and thirty-one of Bryant Avenue. That's map one seventeen lot twenty-five, one point eight acres as follows. A, lot one will be point four six acres will be vacant. B, lot two, point four acres has a detached garage with an unpermitted accessory apartment above. C, lot three, point four seven acres has a single family residence. Does that cover, I think that covers everything here. Tom, do you want to speak about this?
Sure, I, I trust you. I, I have to do this well.
We have all of that.
Oh, my own confusion.
Yeah, we have, they have all those.
We have all of that, yes.
Those maps are great, but.
Well, yeah, I was just trying to explain it. So, one three fifty foot wide right away as generally required. Meet the codes. For the future, as well as establishing a proper right of way. It was only thirty. Thirty-three feet wide basically before. So that's why we're doing all of these little adjustments here. I don't know what else to say. Pretty. Simple and clear, you know, what we're trying to accomplish here. The, originally the pink area number one. Was actually part of the land that goes with that house on lot seventeen. So it was a right of way across that property. So rather than. Leave a right of way across someone's property like that, I, I just converting it to this lot nineteen, which is kind of the, the holdover. Or. Yeah, we just wanted that one lot, that, that kind of the controlling thing. But the, but the right of way. Obviously exists here when we're all said and done.
So you're doing this to straighten out the right of way?
To, just to make it proper, the proper width. And also we've put a hammerhead at the end of this. Which is adequate for emergency vehicles to turn around. So we wanted to, you know. Reserve that space for that, for that purpose.
So there is no hammerhead there now, but that there's space for one.
Right, and if you look at one of his other maps, the one.
Well, the big map shows the area for it.
Yes, yeah.
But one of the explanatory maps has a hammerhead rate.
Okay, I did not see that. In my notes, in my notes of looking at this, hammerhead with a question mark is on my sheets. I did not see the one of the hammerhead.
Do you have a little hammerhead?
Yes.
I don't like that so many. Okay, because it's on the big map.
Yeah, it's on this map. You just, I probably should have called it.
Yeah, yeah. Well, it's really not, it's really not a hammerhead. It's a.
It's a V.
Yeah.
It's a V.
It's a V.
Okay, I have that.
Yeah, you have that. It's on the big map as a V.
There we go. I see it.
Okay, well, so that's what's being inserted.
Alright. Well, the only question that I have about any of this. Is the. Lot two with a detached garage and an unpermitted accessory apartment above, that's from Carol's notes. So does this have to be? Does this need to be cleared up before this is permitted or?
I think if you make it into a lot, it'll be a house. I mean, it's a house with a garage underneath.
So that's lot number two, right?
Right. So I think it'll be cured.
By making it into a, a way you need to, will it need to change from, does it need to?
See, we've left like with, you know, what's that kid's name, Blanger. You remember how we made let him have a garage with a living space above it as a primary residence? So.
Doesn't mean all setback requirements, no? It looks like.
Like you did.
Kind of sort of, there's a stairway on the side that's kind of looks like.
That's actually coming off.
That's coming off?
Yeah, eventually.
Well, I mean, if you just put, I mean, if it really is just. A house on it, I don't know what difference that makes. I'm just, I just haven't, didn't know if we need to clear this up or if we needed to.
No, I think that magically this will clear up. If you approve it.
Well, it's not magic, it's matter of it. It will come into conformance because it will be a.
Single family residence.
Be a single family residence on that lot. So there'll, there'll be no need to. Take any action on it. And I think we probably want to put that in the minutes that if. If this is done, that will clear up this, this unpermitted accessory apartment. Does anyone else disagree or agree?
I agree.
Okay. So. All the lots look like they're of the proper size. The setbacks look like they're there. It's going to clear up that one issue with the unpermitted accessory apartment. Does anyone else on board have any other questions for Tom?
I was wondering about the hammerhead. This is what really had in my mind.
Yeah, I actually.
You may want to draw something different in there besides a Y because. If you're talking about a hammerhead and the hammerhead really isn't a Y, hammerhead allows you to be able to turn around and, you know, right? And this Y does not allow that.
Right, but yeah, I think, I think in a, in an ideal situation, let's pretend we had a paved road here that. Because your hammerhead wouldn't have to be paved sixty by a hundred and twenty, which is what this space is. You'd have a, if it was paved, you'd have a twelve foot wide road there probably. Or whatever. And then, but it's, I, I talked to Ron about this earlier.
This goes back a while, but we, we said it's that big enough. This was according to.
Are you okay with this, the way it's drawn? The other fire chief, you're the one who has to be able to get in there and turn around.
Oh, that, that could still be adjusted.
Yeah, but this was pursuant, I, I looked at the national, whatever, some national fire institute or whatever. About what we needed for emergency vehicles. This is the dimensions that were happened to be in that, that report.
Right, but it just doesn't show a hammerhead is all I'm saying. It shows a Y, which, which, if you were to develop, if you were to develop this song. And, and the way you've got drawn on this big plan. And Ron was to bring a fire truck down there, for him to back it around would be, would be tough the way it's drawn if that was the asphalt.
I agree.
So I, you know.
Yeah.
I think you probably want to, it depends on Ron, you know, I mean, if he's okay with it this way, I'm okay with that, but. If we're going to improve this, we probably ought to discuss it. So at least it.
Yeah, I, I get your point. So I, I think obviously nothing could be built within this space and. I guess that when we do develop it. Some point with this. You know, this is a gravel road. I intend to leave a gravel road and we would have to develop, you know, as if it were paving, we'd have to make a space within that. Hammerhead space so that you would have gravel to drive on.
So that's it. What you've drawn there is actually a sixty.
Sixty by.
Sixty foot wide.
Sixty feet wide, and I think it's a hundred and twenty feet long.
Yeah, on scale or anything.
Well, you got sixteen.
It's fifty-nine. Yeah, so, yeah, so it's sixty and sixty.
That's, it's actually bigger than that, but no, it isn't. Yeah, it's a hundred and twenty, sixty by a hundred and twenty.
We could. If we're going to take a vote on it and approve this, we'd make it a conditional. Fire chief, we satisfied with the. The turnaround here so that he could. Whenever they build it, just before they do it, you know, that, that way there is at least. They can't develop it this way, but they could, they could do that, you know?
Yeah, I, I, I think the easiest way to do that is instead of just dealing with it, trying to get specific tonight, fire chief's approval of a hammerhead turnaround area for a fire.
Well, can, can they fix that for, before I have to record the mile? Because we were going to wait on the mile or until. We were sure that everything is okay. You know what I mean? Like instead of having him bring it in tonight. Is there any way to fix that for?
Well, he could, Tom could fix it. Tom could just simply have his, his surveyor here catalog, partner catalog. Draw, draw a hammerhead in there and that was, that was all lived.
As well, yeah, and consultant Ron.
Can you have, can you have them do that? So a hammerhead that would. That way there, the condition would need to be there and a hammerhead will be in there. And then, you know, it would be.
There you go. And Ron can turn his big stuff around. Like really, anybody cares?
No, I mean, it seems to be. Are there any other comments or questions?
A couple of questions. Is there any fire hydrants on the?
The proposals five acres down at the end of Luan Lane.
At, at, at the town end or the, the far end?
The end down by the property, right, this is a lot.
It's right in front of lot sixteen.
This is. Lot one seventeen sixteen?
Yeah.
Right there?
Right there, yeah.
Oh, oh, okay.
You can see right there where that one pin is there.
Who are we going to further? I'm accusing myself.
You need to see.
No, just wanted to make.
We already did that for you. We already did that for you.
Okay, I want to make sure it's put in.
You can come back.
I just found that I was supposed to be here fifteen minutes ago.
You okay with that? Ron, you okay with that? With fire hydrants? What does that need to be? Does it need to be?
We're looking for an overall distance to the furthest lot from that hydra.
Looks to me like you're looking at a hundred and thirty-seven feet. Hang on.
Come on.
Yeah.
It's less than five hundred feet.
Are you looking at? One thirty-seven.
It'll be about five hundred feet.
Five hundred feet.
I'd be laying it anyway.
What do you mean?
We, we drop the hose and lay into the fire from that hydra on the corner there.
Okay, so that's sufficient?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, you're looking at about four hundred and ten feet.
Yep. It's all pretty flat laying there.
And then my other question is where, where is the sewer running?
That is a good question, OJ. I don't know. I mean, obviously these two houses are hooked up to town sewer and town water.
I can help you in that one.
Well, yeah, I don't know where it is. I've asked, I've asked Nate about it. He doesn't know. He suggested I come find drawings, but it was during COVID and nobody knows.
So there's currently three houses on there, right?
There's currently.
There's yours and there's the two, one on lot three, one on lot two.
Right.
Well, if you want to tell the pumps with the sewer line, as I can tell you. You're almost sitting across from us. Little bit like it's square, back alley. Pat Roffey, Bishop, Wouldn't Indian Bring Sewer Line, and it, one half to which one line near down to Main Street, so here we lose back on line, rest of the sewer line in those two houses.
So the sewer line from these two houses goes.
Right down to Main Street.
Okay. I know that.
I'll put him in, it's right there.
You know what size they are?
Four inch.
Is that enough to carry the, the extra?
You have to ask the engineer.
Yeah, I'm just wondering. Whether that's going to be a gravity system that runs down to Main Street or are these going to be pumping uphill back to the current? We have a pump station about halfway down Luan Lane, correct?
It's not going in that direction. It's going to this man, this manhole is very deep.
Which, which, which manhole?
Where's the manhole at?
It is.
It doesn't show on the legend.
Yeah, it's, it's on here.
There's a sewer manhole right here across from lot one seventeen sixteen. So then there's a sewer manhole right back of lot one seventeen nineteen.
Right, and that's, we have, we have access.
Where, where the herbal, can you see it, OJ? See where it says herbal shopping center?
Yep, I see it.
Straight up from there is sewer manhole.
We have access.
So what's the one right here?
That is. That is basically only to this house right here.
Your, your current house?
Yeah, no, no, well, this, this is my house. Okay, okay. But yeah, that, this feeds into this manhole and then it's pumped from here. Or it goes gravity to the pump, which is here, and then it pumps out to Pollard Road.
Okay.
And then of course someday some, a house here could tie into this, this house could tie into that.
Alright. So there's a sewer manhole there.
Yeah.
With an arrow on it that's pointing towards Main Street.
Yeah, and that, that's a real deep manhole. That's like twelve feet down.
An elevation eight forty-two, eight thirty. So yeah, it's twelve feet.
Twelve feet, yeah. So. This whole property, including this house, could feed gravity into that.
Because you want it, so you can do whatever you want.
Tom, the house, the existing house on the corner here. Does that feed into that sewer manhole?
Yes, it does.
And it gravity feeds to here?
Yeah.
Then it's pumped Pollard Road.
Correct.
If you build a house here, that would do the same thing.
That's right.
Okay, these two houses, are they going in that direction or are they going into this?
Those would, if, if we ever did anything on this, this is just a field now, yeah, there we go.
Okay, so this house is going to need. Some sort of a right of way to get to that spot.
Yeah, but there's no plan to do anything with this right now.
Okay, but I mean, at some point.
At some point, yeah.
Sell or develop or whatever.
I've got, I've got the engineering on that all worked out, actually.
Okay.
Put a sewer line down here and it, and it goes over to this, this manhole.
Yeah.
And, and then they, everything feeds into it. If that ever comes to fruition, I would feed this into that Y too because then it would be gravity and then.
Okay, this is the only house right now that's, that's being pumped? This house on the corner up here?
Which house, you know, when I go, when we go to do the minutes, we're not going to be able to tell this or that.
Okay, so my question was the, the house at the corner of Pollard and Luan Lane.
Okay, so that is map one seventeen lot seventeen.
There you go.
No, 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 no.
Identify it that way. Identify it by the lot number.
Lot seventeen lot twenty owned by LeMontaine.
Yeah, that probably feeds it right into Pollard Road directly.
Okay.
He does.
Yeah.
Okay, lot one seventeen seventeen feeds into. The sewer manhole on Luan Lane that gravity feeds into the sewer pump that's halfway down Luan Lane that's not on this map.
Right.
Okay, so the pump station is not on the map?
No.
Nope.
If, if you look at where it's, where Luan Lane is printed.
Yes.
Somewhere is.
Right here, right about here.
Right, somewhere is around the A or the N's, somewhere in there on the. One seventeen dash twenty side of the road, there's a booster, not a booster pump, a sewer pump station.
You never knew that.
Okay, so the manhole. So the. That one seventeen lot fifteen, one seventeen lot sixteen, you build houses on there, the houses are built on there. They are going to go to the sewer manhole. Which is, is that what this is? One seventeen fifteen RE. Okay, SMH on the map, it's called SMH with an S in the circle.
Right.
And it looks like it's right next to the pin. For the northern edge of the fifty foot right.
On one seventeen.
Which is on one seventeen lot nineteen. Just part of one seventeen lot nineteen or will be.
I mean, really doesn't matter because Tom's going to have to get that sewer. For the rest of these out to the one on Main Street. So is that going to have to be an easement in some sort?
Yeah, if that ever happens.
If that ever happens, here's, here's, here's what I'm thinking, just to be honest. One seventeen seventeen right now. You said feeds into that sewer manhole to the pump station and out.
Right.
It would be advantageous, if you, if you built on one six, one seventeen sixteen, it would do the same thing. It would be advantageous in the construction phase of the road and all. If, if a sewer pipe was put down that whole section, one seventeen sixteen, seventeen, eighteen and nineteen, all fed gravity. Down to that sewer hole and out to Main Street.
I've actually got that all engineered. I'm not going to do that. Originally, I, I had a plan to subdivide this whole place and we had all the infrastructure designed for that. And that's exactly what we were going to do. Take, take all, take all of these and even provision for this lot.
Okay.
To tie into this gravity system. Get it out to there.
Okay.
Down to that deep manhole?
Yeah, that was, that was the, if I did the whole thing.
That would make more sense.
I mean, the cost to do that would like to happen like that.
Oh.
To do all that infrastructure. So that kind of killed that.
Okay, that's the whole thing?
Yeah.
To, to do it on this to run a sewer pipe down here and down here? Is that?
I have no idea. That's not the plan because right now. So we kind of was involved in all of this.
Yeah.
When this property sold and, and he was responsible for putting this in, so he probably hooked these two houses into that manhole already.
Okay.
That's the third one. We could extend, you know, if, if anything ever happens with this. We could extend that line probably into this and likewise with the power. Power.
We're talking about bringing.
I don't think it really matters what he does with his water and sewer as far as his development goes. He helped us. It's only good as a development if you have water. So, you know, I mean, those, these are just theoretical lots that. He's going to do, he's going to develop. I'd be more concerned about. You're, you're adding one, two, three. Four lots to this, right?
Well, actually, you know, three, four.
Just.
No, we're just really adding two lots, two lots.
He's doing boundary line adjustments.
So, right, but I guess my question is that the town has. Town with its water and sewer infrastructure has said that developments need to be. See what impact they'll have on the town, water and sewer. So I don't know how that fits into this. You know, OJ, it's.
Doesn't really change anything, reserve. This, this, well, it creates one vacant lot.
I'm just asking because I know that developments. That had any kind of an impact on water and sewer are supposed to be, before they're approved, they're supposed to show what the impact will be. For the board of selectmen, if I'm not mistaken. Help me out here because.
Okay, I, I mean, I, I look at this as there, there's. Going to be one additional building lot. From the whole group.
So lot one?
Lot one is the, is the new lot.
Lot one is the new lot.
The other lots either have existing buildings on them.
So one seventeen nineteen. What is that?
It's just a field.
Right, but, but.
It's a lot though.
It's a.
It's existing, it's an existing.
Is it an existing lot?
Build, build of a lot.
And one seventeen eighteen is an existing build of a lot. It's already been surveyed, it's already existing?
Yes. Those have been around forever.
Really?
And one seventeen sixteen, I'm sorry, one seventeen eighteen, one seventeen eighteen is also an existing?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so the only new lot is lot one.
Correct.
Right, and then lot two, only because it's separating now.
Okay.
Just one part of the, you know, one building on the property.
But lot, right, but lot two corrects a deficiency in the.
Right, so you end up with three lots there instead of one.
Right.
So that's two new lots.
Right, but one of those is not a buildable lot and it's not buildable because it's already built on. It's, it's got a.
Right.
Whatever, a house with a garage underneath it or a garage with an apartment on top of it.
On top of it, yeah.
It's, it's already, it's already built, so it's not a buildable lot that it's making. It's an improved lot.
So we're only really adding one lot to all of this that's not currently already a lot.
And it was never our intention to have people do sewer studies for, for a house.
No, 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 no.
Right, just to clarify.
I was just under the impression that this was all new.
Yeah, no, no. And, and my concern with, 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 my, my questioning with the sewer is that right now we have a sewer pump station that's really serving one, one house. And it would just make sense. Obviously, gravity is much easier than electricity to feed that down.
And get rid of the pump station.
And get rid of the pump station.
I would agree. Is, is Luan Lane a town road?
Half of it, a portion of it.
Well, all of it, really. I mean, Luan Lane is just a straight section that goes down. And then at the end. That straight section. That becomes. My land there.
Almost sixteen.
It's just that shown on the drawing pretty much. It goes off the main street, but it's only, it's just a walking path over Main Street.
So is the right of way of Luan Lane out to Pollard Road? Is that all, is that private?
It's, it's a town road at Pollard Road and it's a town road all the way till you come down to, you can see where the property line. Goes across it at fifty, fifty-one point nine six feet. That's the property line where, where. The passable way that's Luan Lane crosses onto Tom's private property. So it, it ceases being a town road there. However, it does go straight out. You can see it goes all the way out. And this is sixteen foot right of way that goes all the way out to, to Main Street.
Correct.
I don't, I don't believe that's walkable though, is it?
You can't now, it's back on one.
Well, no, it isn't.
It's, isn't it?
It's, it's a path. People walk on it.
Oh, okay, I thought it was more brush and.
There's, there's trees there, but there's room for.
Yeah.
For people to walk on.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay, alright.
I would think Tom would approach the town and talk about how, how he could work with the town to possibly get rid of that sewer pump station in order to be able to affect the gravity, so that wouldn't.
Well, actually, yeah.
There, there would be no, no pump station maintenance, no pump station cost, none of that.
Yeah.
It would, it would come off the back of the, the town, it would be certainly be in the town's best interest, I would think.
Absolutely.
Well, I, I did talk to Butch about that, you know, months ago, uh, probably pre-COVID, I would guess. And, uh, it never went, I mean, that was the whole thing, you know, he said, yeah, maybe the town could participate in getting it, because you get rid of that pump station, which I don't know how much that costs to maintain that thing, but he, he threw out a number like twenty five thousand dollars, and I don't know if that was a year or what it was, but it's expensive, so, you know, I, I definitely would be eventable to, to doing something like that if it worked. At some point, you know, I, I don't need it for what we're doing here.
No, no.
But, but it, it, I've got that line all engineered out, so the town law say, hey, plus, can we put that line in, then I'd say, amen.
I, I guess I would see it as when, and again, you, you're putting that in as a gravel road, which.
On the gravel road.
Yeah.
It's not a town road.
It's.
I mean, it's right thing that says they can't. He's running the meeting, not me, just the one.
Well, is there any other questions about this proposal, Carol? You have any comments, Butch? Or questions or concerns?
No, I just wanted to be clear about, um, you know, if we do have to make arrangements for water and sewer, that it's clear in our minutes what the plan was.
What do we need, as, as part of an approval, are we, are we supposed to have, have the applicant, does the applicant have to have a plan for water and sewer? Um, before we give approval, or is it just that we're, we're looking at these lots and saying, you know, they fit, they meet the ordinance? There's only one new lot going in, the other lot, lot number two, we specified the lot number two is to clear up that unpermitted accessory apartment. And that he can proceed, with, with, with going ahead and and, and doing all this, whenever he comes back in, he still has to come back in for site plan review. Or, or for permitting, when they, when, when he adds a new house onto any of these lots, right? And then we'll have to document and, and state that the, where the town's property is and where, where Tom's is.
Okay, so let's just think about this, each one of these lots that already exists.
Except for one.
Except for the one. If he, if he came in for a land use permit for any of them, he'd have to talk to Nate, he'd have to figure out how to put the do the water and sewer hookup, we're only providing water and sewer to the waters who remain, so it's up to them. So I guess that won't be indifferent for any of these lots. Is it already existing?
Right, and when he puts water and sewer, he had the water and sewer has to conform to state standards, I mean, it just can't be.
Right.
The, yes, I mean, if he's gonna put water and sewer down to there, which I'm sure he is to get, get to there at some point in time. There, there is no water, is there water and sewer to lot one seventeen nineteen and one seventeen eighteen?
Uh, there is actually a curb stop at eighteen.
But there is no curb stop nineteen.
Yeah.
That all comes off Pollard Road?
No, is that the thing?
That comes off that line where the hydrant is, yeah, it comes off.
Okay, okay, which comes off Pollard.
Yeah, right.
This kind of reminds me of, of when we did when we built my house, all different households up there, like my father and mother inherited that property. We did the road and I designed the water and sewer. And the town, now that was back, obviously a little ways ago, but the town didn't have anything say about where we put the water and sewer, because it was on a private road, and it was a, it was I'm assuming that that's a private water system, because the town doesn't own it. So a, any of the water and sewer that goes down on, on the private road would be a private water system.
No, cause there's no pumping, if you were gonna redistribute, it would be a course, right? Um, which would be a private water system, but your.
Privately operated redistribution system with a pump, but you still, the town's not gonna own the water and sewer that's in that right away.
Correct.
So if Tom puts water and sewer down that right away, the town's not gonna own it. So doesn't matter, I guess is my point. Question?
Yes.
We probably ought to ask.
Well, we have Ray on here.
Ray, are you here? Wake him up. Ray Corber?
Yes, I'm here.
Alright, so we have before us an application from Tom Tremblay. Does he have any of this information, Ray?
Well, he, he gets copies of it, but I don't think he was planning to be involved in it necessarily.
So my question to you is, if we have, and I don't know if you can see this plan. But, and the, and the fifty foot right away here, that they're proposing, that right away is a private right away. If he was, if he was to put water and sewer down that right away, does the town have any requirements that we should be stating now while we're looking to approve this?
Well, yeah, I think it should, I think, uh, you know, if you're putting it down a, a private right away, there's obviously the potential that it could become a town right away, at some time in the future, they could petition for that, number one. Number two, um, anytime you're making a connection to a public infrastructure, uh, we certainly recommend that it be, um, any, any whether it's a water or sewer service or a private line, we recommend that it be, uh, constructed to town standards. And obviously, it needs to be constructed DES standards, cause it's an extension of your system.
Right, and that's why I was saying that when they installed it, they would have to install it to meet DES standards anyway. And the town, when, when they made that connection onto the town, onto the town.
Yep, and I mean, the stand, the standards are, you know, uh, you know, pretty, very straightforward, it's not, we're not talking rocket science here, so, I mean, within that, within the right away, what are they proposing for lines? So they proposing put in a six inch water and an eight inch sewer, or?
There's nothing right now, well, no, we're not planning to do that now, the, the, the only thing that he's before us to do tonight is to make this make these lots a matter of public record and get the town blessing for the laws.
Yeah, this is, this is lot line adjustments.
Lot line adjustments.
In, in, in a subdivision.
Okay, so it's basically a subdivision plan.
Right.
Okay.
But he, you know, it's really just subdividing his property now, we're not saying how he's gonna do any of his utilities later on, and I don't know if we need to put something in our approval that says that it needs to meet water and sewer regulations within town and DES. Uh, when that happens, or is that just taken for granted that, that it, he will have to meet that?
Uh, well, I mean, again, it's, you know, the, the, in you know, certainly in my view, the town has, you know, the, the town has the right to, you know, insist that any infrastructure that that's tied into public infrastructure should be constructed to, you know, should meet the standard of care. So, um, I don't think it would hurt to put that in as a condition of approval, that, you know, it needs to meet it. You know, all water and sewer hookups, connections, services, extensions, uh, need to comply with Town of Lincoln, uh, requirements, simple statements like that should be subdivision.
Okay. That makes sense, cause you got to do that, hey?
Yeah, we can do that, and along the same time, we can talk about, and the same thing, we can say that, that discuss the detached, um, accessory apartment that's gonna take care of that, so. Right, so we've taken care of the infrastructure as far as water and sewer goes. No one has any questions about the lots?
Well, the only thing is, are you gonna give him a certain amount of time to remove, um, the stuff that's in the setbacks on lot number two? He's, you know, Tom says he's gonna take that off. Remove the stuff that's in the setback area.
I kind of think, it looks to me like a stairway.
It's a emergency.
Does it go to the second?
Yeah.
Story apartment, and we did that down here on the, um, the apartment above the Mexican place. We allowed them to be into the right away, because it is an emergency access going to the second floor. That was part of.
Yeah, I can't remember.
No, no, but we did do that, and because it is, i- if it truly is an access to that.
That's what it is right now, but my plan is to take.
Carol, you want to hear for that one?
Do you remember that, Joe?
Yeah.
So we did allow that, I was gonna say it was about here too. Oh, you don't remember that? And we had to, he was gone.
Don't, don't forget, I was, I was on.
You're older than you look.
No, but I was on the committee when I first was on the board of selectmen, it was only after Patricia, Patricia McTagg left the board of selectmen that I. So, so.
So we all, yeah, I mean, we allowed that as an access, um, to be in the right away, so I'm not sure if that's a real sticking point or not.
To be honest, it's not a concern for me, it's an existing building, granted, the, the line doesn't exist there, and we're putting it or we're allowing it to be in the setback, but whereas it's a stairway, it's not the, it's not part of the main building.
And it's an access, so it's.
And it's an emergency access, I don't see it as a, as a.
And, and those are usually exempt from, uh, being in the, the right away.
Well, it's a setback, so.
Right, I, I excuse me, I'm sorry.
Setback.
Setback, I'm sorry, I meant to say, I meant to say setback. Alright, so are there any other questions? Comments, Tom give any questions or comments?
No.
So, so the way it stands right now, we're looking at this, this subdivision. And we would put a condition that the, that the infrastructure meets all of town town and DES requirements prior to being installed. Uh, we would also state that the, are you going to do the right, the hammerhead change, are you gonna have that done?
Yeah, I'll do it on the mylar.
On, on the mylar, okay, so, so you will, so the applicant will also change the mylar to reflect a um, a hammerhead turnaround in that sixty by one twenty area. And that we also understand that in creating lot number two, um, that will take care of the concern about a detached garage with an unpermitted accessory apartment above. Was there anything else that?
Do we? Do we wanna put in that, that it is our expectation that when, when developed, lots one seventeen eighteen and one seventeen nineteen, um, the sewer will be hooked up to the gravity system. And that the applicant, um.
I think we probably should let Tom come in and talk to the town about that with the pump station, isn't it, he might be able, you know?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I think we could deal that as a separate.
You know what I mean, he's come in and talked to whoever's on the board, say, look, I'd like to do this and make, make it all go gravity this way, so we could do that, what can we do together?
That's, that makes more sense, you're right.
You know what I mean, so, so we don't nail anything down today, it gives you some options.
Right.
I'd like to set up a meeting, we can talk about that.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Alright.
Does that work?
Yeah, and actually, that's probably the right way to do it. Leave it out of this meeting, this is just a subdivision, when you come in for your building permit, we'll talk about you don't have to wait till then, but sometime prior to getting a building permit, we'll have to have a discussion on um, water and sewer.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Do I, do I have a motion?
First, I'll make a motion to open a public hearing.
Okay, that's where we're going.
Okay.
So, do you have a second? Anyone from the public, Joe?
If you do a gravity feed back at Lincoln Square, then right away, back on the hoods, I'm sure, like, who, whoever might give you right away, but if you think about it, it's six AC, HVAC units right in the middle of the stations, and a stone wall back there, so it's kind of prohibited. Unless you wanna do a major, major.
Well, when he decides he wants to talk to the town.
Well, the manhole's already existing, and I have, uh, teed it right away to that.
I was trying to say, it's a stone wall, and they see you and say, oh, the town with the soil line and water line in there.
Well, that can be worked out with the, with the board of selectmen, I know how that works. Was there anyone else that wanted to make a comment, I didn't see that behind me, Susan Schneier, Judy? Anybody else wanna make a comment?
Yeah, Judy's our recorder.
Recording, right.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to close public hearing.
A motion to the second. All in favor, aye. Okay, now we'll go on to the approval or disapproval, whatever we wanna do. Um, someone wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we a- approve, we better do this in two separate motions, I assume, so I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the, um, subdivision of, of.
Impound.
Sorry, approve the boundary line adjustments, um, as written under proposal A in the, um, application. And with those, the, the, I believe, three, actually, it's really two conditions, one is, is the hammerhead who's gonna be added to the mylar, the water and sewer wind built will be to town standards. And then, that's not really a condition, but just the statement that, that in doing this sub, uh, doing this lot line adjustment, we get rid of the unapproved.
Might I suggest?
Well, I think you could say.
How about we put that, how about we put that on a, on a note on the mylar? That states that the infrastructure will meet that, because that will then be, that, that, that goes to the recorded, to be recorded, and that, and that's a, that's a permanent record.
I'll, I'll change my motion and make it so that there'll be a note on the mylar that the water and sewer will be built to town standards.
And DES.
And DES.
And DES, alright.
Only apply to lot one.
Well, it applies to anything that you do in that fifty foot right away for water and sewer. So if, if you were gonna.
Either way, it does better, it's gotta be done that way.
It's gotta be done that way anyway.
You wanna put that, make a note so that you can, when you're changing that hammerhead, you wanna put a note on, another note on there?
Well, I'm gonna write that up, Carol, and I'll put it on the chart, just to make sure I got it.
Oh, Carol, Carol's got, she can get that to you.
Yeah, just so you, I got it written the way you guys want it written.
Right, and what I'll do is, um, you know, Judy will work on the minutes, but I'll just re-listen to what we talked about and make sure.
So there was the, the infrastructure, there was the hammerhead that needed to be changed.
I don't even know if that, that comment about the, um, the curing even needs to be on this, I mean.
Well, I think.
Well, I think it's helpful, only because then we're.
Good contracts make good friends, once it's in writing somewhere.
Trail to cure a problem, and so he's not gonna have an issue like, say, if I croak tomorrow, you know, he's gonna try to do something with that house, and, you know, they're gonna be puzzling, you know, was this okayed or not okayed, and.
Well, OJ does have a good point, cause you're getting rid of, you're adding that lot line, which really does make that a whole separate thing, so.
Right, we're curing a problem that isn't gonna exist anymore, I don't see, it, it'll be, it'll be documented in the minutes. It'll be documented in the minutes, I.
I, I would agree with you, I think.
It doesn't hurt, but it's, it just, to me, just seems.
I agree with you, I, I, I think, Carol, if it's in the minutes, then we don't have to put it as a note, so. What do you think, Steve? Alright, so the only notes, the only changes are gonna be. One of the notes. Will say that the infrastructure will meet all town and DES requirements for water and sewer, and the other one, change that Tom will make. Is that it'll show a hammerhead in that. So, I think.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extensions? All here, all set?
Thanks, John.
Sorry for the confusion. You want to keep that stat? Alright, so. According to the.
Oh, we don't want, I need, uh, we will need three.
According to the, the, um. Attendant, Joe, you wanna sit back down, take a few seconds? We're gonna. Turn until Joe's ready.
Oh, I get it. Another one, I was looking at it, like.
Yeah, it's dry well, well. Going now, yeah.
This wasn't too long, so hey, or wait.
Yeah, um. Well, you wanna call a meeting back to order? Stop running it.
I, I, I'm just waiting, what do you want me to do here, buddy? You want me to return, is that what you want me to do?
No, I wanna get going to Great Corporate. I mean, he's.
I know, right, ma?
I know, I know, I just sorta kidding.
Oh, that's sorta.
Hey, Joe!
He could be out there for days, huh?
Right. There's been no motion made to, to change the chairman, so.
Still here, I guess.
Keep going.
Let's go.
You wanna go? Alright. So we'll move on to public participation in other business.
No, the, the, um.
Uh, uh, we have minutes.
No, but.
Just to Great Corporate, this is just the, uh, disturbed areas from our management.
Okay, I didn't see that on the.
It's, it's, it's at the very bottom, right before public, be stormwater manager, I, I didn't see it either.
Oh, stormwater management ordinary, continuing discussion, yes, okay.
So we have a memo before us.
Yeah, we have a memo before us from Ray. And.
So, you wanna invite Ray to talk about it before we discuss it?
Let me find it again. I have so many. I wasn't ready. Chair this meeting.
If someone doesn't have, I have two copies of it.
Determination of disturbed area, I gotta thank.
Right, right underneath those, the thing you said.
Yep, yeah, okay. So, we have. Um, I remember memorandum from Ray dated September twentieth, twenty one. Planning board about the history of stormwater management ordinance. Ray, you wanna talk about your memo?
Uh, sir, sure, happy to, um. So, uh, the board had requested that, um, the, uh, we take a look at the, uh, the, this issue of. Um, definition for disturbed area, if you recall, last fall, we had a discussion around it. And the, um, uh, the consensus opinion was that, you know, the, the town would adhere to. The way the Department of Environmental Services defines disturbed area, which is consistent with the way we have been. Uh, defining it. You know, for, for quite some time. So, um, and then we had some discussion, uh, also regarding the, um, the challenges that, um. The, uh, single family homeowners are having in, uh, complying with the stormwater management ordinance. So, this memorandum that, uh, is before you, and just for clarification, it was a collaborative effort between. Uh, Carol, Peter Malia, and myself, um. And, uh, we thought, we thought putting something in front of the board so that you could review it. Basically run something up the flagpole, so you can review it and shoot at it if you'd like, so. Uh, that's really the, the, um, the, the gist and the purpose of the memorandum. So I won't read through all of it, um, I did touch on some of it, I think at the last planning board meeting, uh, when we were talking specifically about. Uh, again, the challenges of single family house lots to meet the stormwater management ordinance. But we broke the, broke the memorandum down into really three, uh, components, uh, first off is just to give you just a brief history of the stormwater management ordinance. Uh, that in March of two thousand fifteen, the town adopted an ordinance to address the impacts. Uh, to the public infrastructure, if you remember back then, a couple of issues. Uh, number one, we had the flooding at the, um, uh, the community center. And then we also had, uh, recurring calls into town hall because of discharges to, uh, local streams and brooks from. Um, housing lots that, house lots that were being, um, that were being, you know, worked on and, um, and stripped. Um, so in two thousand fifteen, you adopted the ordinance, in two thousand seventeen, you amended the ordinance to expand the application of the ordinance to address the same issues generated from the development of single family house lots. And, um, and then we also, um, at the October twenty eighth planning board meeting of last year. Uh, that's when we had the, um, discussion regarding the definition of disturbed area. So that's kind of the history of, um, the background backstory with respect to this memorandum. Uh, the second portion of the memorandum, we talk about the current practice for the calculation of the disturbed area, and I will go over that in a little bit of detail here. Um, essentially, what we do is we're, we're utilizing, uh, from the discussion back last fall, we're using, utilizing that discussion. And also what you have on the books as far as definition of various terms. Uh, to develop this, the current practice for calculation of disturbed area. So I'll just go through the bulleted items there, you see at the bottom of the first page. The area disturbance includes all areas related to the development of what, inclusive of areas outside the property boundary. The reason why it's inclusive of pro, of areas outside the property boundary is because it gets to that. Uh, what the state recognizes as a contiguous disturbed area, meaning area that's disturbed. Uh, that, that's disturbed, uh, continuously across, uh, a landscape. So, um. One of the issues that we've run into is folks have come to us to, in their interpretation, the development community, some of in the development community. Basically, when they read the stormwater management orders, they believe that the ordinance only applies to the footprint of the lot. And it doesn't apply to anything outside of the property boundaries. Uh, if you were to really think about stormwater runoff, obviously, if you're ignoring. Um, areas outside of the property boundaries that are actually disturbed and connected to, uh, the activity within the property boundaries, that's contiguous area. And, uh, technically speaking, the right way to look at that is to, um, make. Um, all areas of disturbance of the lot inclusive of areas outside of the boundary. That are contiguous to the area of disturbance, so that's the first bullet item. The second bullet item is area of disturbance is defined as any change to existing conditions or existing contours. Again, that's consistent with the way the state, uh, Department of Environmental Services, uh, looks at area of disturbance, um, it's. Uh, pretty straightforward standard of care. Uh, and then third bullet item is the area of the lot, we don't include the area outside of the lot limit, even though it's inclusive in terms of area disturbance. We don't include the lot, uh, in the, uh, or the areas outside of the lot. Uh, in the calculation for disturbed area, because the lot is defined as everything within that boundary footprint by definition. Uh, in, uh, your regulations. So if you look at the, some of the attachments that we had to the memorandum, we just highlighted, um, out of the New Hampshire Code of Administrative Rules. Uh, we underlined and highlighted some, um, uh, some of the verbiage in, uh, those regulations. Uh, that back up the, um, how we calculate the area disturbance, we also. Um, included a, you know, a page that defines how basically that it's a definition of lot as a town link and defines it. So we wanted to, to share, um, with you how the town staff is going about calculating the area of disturbance, um, it is. You know, it's a conservative approach, um, but in, in our view, it's the right approach. So at this point, I think I'll just open it up for any questions that anybody has with respect to that, those calculations.
I have, um. Couple of comments here. The, when we held our, we. Were going back and. Let's see, that October twenty eighth meeting, um. We said that we would. The board decided to leave the stormwater management ordinance as is. And to add the definition of disturbed to the land use plan ordinance, a public hearing will be held to make this change. We, we never did that. Um, so this, this board never really had a public hearing, which they said they were, which we said we were gonna do. To be able to. Um, define that, define that disturbance. And at the last time, Red, when we talked at the last planning board meeting, we talked about putting a planning board member on the. Technical review committee. Um, to be able to. Look at, um, at some of these. Variances, it wasn't really a variance, it was a, you were going to do a, something outside of the. Fifty percent. And the. Fifteen hundred square feet, fifteen thousand square feet. That we currently have.
Yeah, that's, that's. I'm sorry, go ahead. Yeah, what you're referring to is, what you're referring to is the last part of the memorandum, which is. Um, I, I, I just wanna be sure that, you know, the, the, the board understands. How we calculate. Area disturbance, it's, again, the, the definition of area disturbance is consistent with the way the state. Does it, and we make, we cross-reference some of those, um, state regulations. Um, and then in terms of how we define, you know, what a lot is, that's as per town regulations, so. We feel that's, you know, that's consistent. And then again, going back to the state regulations in terms of contiguous area, it includes, in terms of the area disturbance, it includes not only. The area disturbance within the limits of the lot, but also anything that happens outside of the limits of that lot, like within the, within the roadway right away.
I, I found, I had found this. Lot language and guidance for implementation for a post. For permanent, uh, construction of stormwater management, one ordinance that was done by, uh, prepared by the DES and an answer association conservation districts, I found. Um, the fact, it was actually online, um. In one of the state websites, and I haven't really had a whole lot of time to compare that with what you're suggesting. And I'd like to have a little more time to be able to do that. Um, because I think they have some, some things in here, like. For instance, one of their things was that they were talking about a twenty thousand square foot area. Instead of a fifteen thousand square foot area. Um, and they were talking about the maximum effective impervious coverage on, I'd say, ten percent of the site. And then they, one of the other things I picked up was, any contiguous area disturbance is not associated with the installation. Of a roadway shall be limited to twenty thousand square feet of residential development. And I, I just picked up a few things, and, and I'd like a little more time to look at it before I. Before we make the final decision, but I think it has, did you, did, Carol, did you send Mr. Ray?
Yeah, but not until this morning.
Yeah, yeah, I just, yeah, I've been busy, so. Um, I'd actually like to see, Ray, if, if you could look at that and see if there's any. You know, to get your comments on it, as it relates to what we currently have.
Uh, yeah, I actually did review it before the meeting, because I thought Carol had mentioned that we were probably gonna discuss it. Um, yeah, this is, um, the DES has model ordinances for like stormwater, steep slopes, and, and a couple of other environmental, um, conditions. And based on my read of this document, and I think, you're right, it, it, um. It's actually on the, uh, the Office of, uh, State Energy and Planning, I believe, it's on their website. Um, it's a pretty comprehensive, this is one, um, section of a fairly comprehensive document for land use planning. Um, recommendations and suggestions, and the stormwater management ordinance that you have. Um, while not as lengthy as this, reflects this document. They, this is, there's nothing, there's nothing much different in this document relative to yours, except they spell out. Uh, in quite lengthy detail about, um. Uh, how to, you know, address, you know, water quality, recharge to groundwater. You know, those specific thresholds that they identify in here is not in your ordinance, your ordinance is a, um, uh. You know, a Reader's Digest version, if you will, of, of this, this ordinance that you, or this model ordinance that you reference.
And they, they did talk. In some, in some ways about, um, not only twenty thousand square feet, but they talked about, um. Using, uh, percentage of slope as it relates to, uh, stormwater protection and, and determinations of, of, uh. Where you draw your lines, and as well as the soil types. As an, as another method of, um, calculating or, or deciding how, how much you really need to. Um, take a look at it when you disturb the soil, so I mean. And, and that to me, I thought about some of the flat lots that we've had in town. And then I thought about some of the real steep, Billy Goat's rough ones, that Carol calls them over in South Peak, so there, there seems to be. Some specialties here, you know, that, that might help us and, and, uh, change in some of this.
Uh, yeah, we could, you know, this, certainly things you can take into consideration for sure, I mean, again, this, this is a much more. Comprehensive, much more detailed, uh, narrative relative to your ordinance, and again, you can, you can get as. You can get as, um, I guess sophisticated as you want within the context of your ordinance. Um, but I would, I mean, I would just, and I'm not saying you should do one thing or another, I'm just saying that, um, you know, you. My suggestion would be is to, to assess if your current ordinance is doing what. You wish it to do, is it doing what you intended to do, and based on, I think we, we talked about this last time, and. Based on my observation, uh, I believe it is, I think it's, it's, we're. You know, we're not getting those, and Carolyn, you can, maybe you can address this, but you're not getting the phone calls to town hall. Of people complaining about runoff from individual house lots and, uh, development projects, et cetera, et cetera, I mean, it's. Uh, you're not, you're not seeing the, you know, the, uh, you know, the flooded parking lot over at the community center, so. The, the things that you have implemented. The ordinance being one of them, some of the process and procedures that you put into place. Um, to follow through and follow up on the enforcement end, uh, seem to be working, seem to be effective, you can, you can, you can. You know, add more bells and whistles to the ordinance if you wish, but. Um, I would just, you know, throw that out for your, you know, consideration.
Well, I, I don't know that that's true in a way, Ray, because we've had, we've had complaints about. Stuff on flat lots, even like, uh, the one up here by the Nordic, where the water was gonna drain down back at, uh. Uh the homeowners where uh Mrs. Boyle lived. Um Steve knows where Jane had, there was an issue with the homeowner that. Was putting water, I think, on Jane's property, and that was a relatively flat lot, so I mean, w- we have had those and that and that's why. When I look at this, I think that, you know, our ordinance could be tailored a little more. Based on the 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 conditions of the lot that might give us a little more flexibility. And that's and and that's kind of what what I'm looking for in that regard. And like I said, I haven't looked at it all yet, but I I I think we do have some, I do think we have some. Some things we should address in that regard.
Certainly, I mean, if, you know, I I mean, the the exams you just, you know, you just highlighted, I I'm not aware of, you know, those particular situations. So I mean, if there are situations in the community where, you know, the ordinance isn't um. You know, isn't uh isn't working, then then definitely she want definitely wanna take a look at that. Uh again, I'm just going based on my experience, based on the reviews that we're doing on the single family house lots and the. Hampton ends, the Fairfield ends, the medical development facility, you know.
I mean, don't get me wrong, I I think it's, I I I think it's it's working, it's just, I I mean, and the other thing is is the cost factor. I mean, it it it's. Maybe not prohibitive um for people who are building. Um bigger houses and more expensive houses to have to go through a. A process like this, but for somebody who's not doing that, to have to go through a process like this might be. Might be, you know, prohibitive to them, you know, or hard hardship on them, and I don't know that that we have any. Ways for to address that either, so.
Yeah, I'm not really getting.
Right.
For. For the small, you know, the little man, cuz the little man can't afford to buy anything here.
Well, that's true, but I mean, you know, you take a look at, I mean. What we did up, the stuff up at Forest Ridge, I mean, that's all coming down, it's affecting all of this. And we went through all of all of that with the with the. Community building and how all how how all that worked out, and that's. I just think that there's.
Well, the other, the other big problem area is Mansion Hill.
Right, so Mansion Hill, yeah.
So those lots have been selling, they're small lots, those are probably the most modest houses that we're giving permits for, but they're not, you know. They're not what I would call really modest, but um you know, they're smaller than over here in South Peak. Uh but but the water issues are real and they are big over on that, you know, on that steep slope over there.
And Washington, the water is, but that problem is poorly built.
I know, but it's aggravated, it's.
That house on the corner says the town blocked up the drain, floods the basement, that was flooded the day after they put.
It's not just that house anymore. It's other people higher up that are getting flooded too. So Wendy Tanner, for example.
Who?
Wendy Tanner, Tom and Wendy.
That's all pilot same mother ground aquifer that goes right down to the house and bottom of the hill.
Yeah, but she's, but the house, the two house lots above her were were all wooded before. And the people above her bought those two lots and clear cut both of those lots. So all that water from those two lots, small house lots are all coming down. And impacting the neighbors down below and other houses lots have sold and another, you know, I've granted two permits up there. Um just recently, so. That water is all gonna come down, and one of them is one of the ones that Ray came to you. And and found a workaround because it really was too steep to put. Um the detention pond up there was not really gonna be safe. Uh they had two, I think, two different um. Same firm, Horizons Engineering, but you know, two different engineers look at that and, you know, they. The first couple of times they walked away, they said they they didn't think they'd be able to. Um do what needed to be done there, so. That's when Ray came, they came with a request for a waiver that we support.
I agree with you, take what the community center is, even in fifties, it was three feet of water on a pile of road. Without any development up there. He said the trench go down somewhere, the trench goes by the road, I've seen times there's water speaking above that road, flood right across Paul Road. To put this pipe chat, no one big empty hand water coming out, it's a tremendous amount of water up there.
I didn't think we were gonna resolve this, I, I think that, you know, probably one of the things we we can resolve is we probably should have. Do what we said we were gonna do, and when I look back through the minutes, I think the reason, we we had a real long meeting about this one night. And we were supposed to um do a public hearing on a disturbed area and we didn't do it. So we probably should do that, put that on, I I would think as an agenda item, so we could um do that some night and have that. And that be the the official definition.
And that's that's a change of that ordinance if we if we defining something in that ordinance, so that needs to go before town meeting. So the public hearing has to take place between some date in January and some other day. Uh so let's let's wait and do that, and if we're gonna make any of these changes that are on this memo. Um or or add anything else, let's let's do it all at once.
Okay.
Um I have a question for Ray though, first of all, I think that, you know, the goal here is. Is to maintain a Stormwater Management Act that's effective, so so that neighbors don't get. Inundated with water because of what um you know, in a butter or nearby resident is is doing with their land. And I wanna keep that in place, I you know, I think that that we. We don't want to make it any less stringent as far as its effectiveness, I think what we're looking to do is. Take these situations where they trigger it, but they might not really need it and give some flexibility to the staff to say, okay. You know, you may, you may waive this if it may, if it's slightly over with this fifty five percent and. Sixteen thousand five hundred square feet of disruption. In theory, I think that's a good idea, some sort of flexibility where they can look at each situation, not that they have to, but. Um say, okay, for this one, we'll waive it, but for this one, no, you need to do a stormwater management act. In addition to that, I'm not saying replace it, but in addition to that, and Ray, I'd like your opinion on this. I'm wondering if we do a if we uh delineate a difference between permanent disturbance and temporary disturbance. Where if if someone is coming in um with a with a single, again, single family house only. We're not talking about like this guy up the street that was gonna do a house in three rental units, that's that's not even part of this discussion.
Correct.
Um but a single family house, let's say it's it's gonna do a disturbance of. Either over fifty percent or over fifteen thousand square feet. But if you take away the temporary disturbance. It falls under the fifty percent and under the fifteen thousand square feet. What about allowing a waiver for that so long as they have an erosion control plan to deal with the. Um temporary disturbance, and here's what I'm thinking, is it is a house lot. And I don't know if one exists, but in theory, let's say it's a big flat piece of land. And and he's gonna build far back from the road. So he's gonna dig up a big, long strip of grass to put in a water pipe, big, long strip of grass to put in a sewer pipe. And then he's gonna reseed them into lawn. Well, if you look at the whole project, he's gonna go over the fifteen thousand square feet, but if you then go back and say, well, um. Permanently, it's gonna be way under fifteen thousand square feet that he's disturbing, does he really need a stormwater management act? Or he's, does he just need an erosion control plan for the disturbed area um. Uh temporarily, you know, where the house is, the driveway, and then the big long water and sewer pipes. Um and and I'm just using that as an example, one case where I don't think a a stormwater management fence needed, but it would trigger that. But only because of the temporary disturbance, and the same could be set up, say, storing. Materials on the lot, you know, you you take a grassy area, you gotta pile loam there, okay, technically it's disturbed. You know, two months later, that loam is gone, it's back to loam, it's not disturbed, is he, do they need a stormwater management back? Or do they need an erosion control plan?
Oh yeah, I agree with you, cuz some places have had the truck. About two thousand yards of film stored somewhere and bring it back, put the same field it took out back again, it doesn't make any sense. Also, there is a state law, Carolyn, you said, there was a major state, US State Supreme Court ruling. The southern part of the state, we had this problem, cuz the guy wanted to disturb some land, some land and back his building. To produce something, his plans, the town stopped him, went to State Supreme Court, now I think it was back in nineteen. Uh ninety eight or so, C I T, no, C I T, simplex, simplex. If you remember that, that case hearing, that was a state documented Supreme Court ruling. That after he took the town to court, town's he disturbed more than that, while he's putting back to what it was originally. And he's, and after he gets all the court case done, he sold land to somebody else, did do, to build what he was gonna build, but get a nice chunk of change out of the town.
Yeah, I don't really care what it looks like, what they're doing, as long as it looks good and it doesn't offend anybody when it's done, that's that's the main thing.
Well, state law said, as a commercial entity, you get, you can disturb a hundred thousand square feet. Right in here.
Right, but again.
I think you were asking Ray a question.
Right, but it's not what it looks like or what the limit of the the.
Yeah.
Let's let Ray answer it both ways.
Stormwater management aspect of it, Ray, any thoughts on that?
Yeah, well, I mean, you know, obviously, there, you know, any temporary disturbance on the land is subject to erosion, so it would. It 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 should be, it should be, it should be considered within the context of either, you know, the um. Uh certainly, the during the construction activity itself and maybe, you know, post-construction, so it depends upon what it is. So stock, if you're gonna stockpile, you know, um if you're gonna stockpile loam on the site. That stockpile loam has the potential to run off, so how's the, what's the best way to handle that? Well, the best way to handle that is put cell fence around that, what is cell fence around a stockpile, it's a temporary erosion control measure. To make sure that you're not gonna have um excessive uh runoff from the site. And have to deal with water quality issues, et cetera, et cetera, so. That's a, that's, that would fall under the definition of disturbance. And but it's temporary, so I don't think, I would not recommend that you say that, you know, all temporary. Is excluded from the calculation from disturbed area, I don't think that would be a good idea.
No, I'm not saying that, I'm saying that that that. If if the, if the permanent disturbance were less than fifteen thousand square feet. And fifty percent. But the the permanent and temporary together exceeded those.
Yeah.
That this this committee could grant a waiver of the stormwater management. Plan, but not, but would still require the erosion control plan.
Oh yes, certainly, and that's that was, that's part of, if you look in our recommendation under item. On the last page, under the recommendation, under item C. Four. Any any waiver that, uh for example, that town staff would have the authority to grant. Uh we're recommending that an approved erosion and sediment control plan be part of the requirement. That it not just simply be, okay, we're waving the magic wand for, you know, cuz you're at fifty fifty four percent. So go ahead and, you know, disturb the activity, I mean, we would, we recommend that. At a minimum, an erosion and sediment control plan be submitted and reviewed and approved by the town and then enforced during construction activity.
So, okay, so so let's say on number two. Um the waiver shall not exceed ten percent of the thresholds established under the ordinance. Uh currently, that is up to fifty five percent of the lot and sixteen thousand five hundred square feet. Um or and then add um uh. Well, uh I don't know, language that says that that it 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 can also apply to any. Lot that triggers, I mean, Stormwater Management Act, um if the permanent disturbed area is less than fifty percent. And less than fifteen thousand square feet.
So are you suggesting that the the planning board will give authority to the town staff to issue a. Waiver of that? That if in the opinion of the town staff, that the temporary disturbance. Is de minimis, that the town can. Can basically take that into consideration, say, okay, so it, you know, if the permanent is, you know. Slightly less and the temporary kicks you over, but the temporary. You know, at the end of the day, really is gonna add up to anything in terms of the intent. Of the stormwater management ordinance. Then the town staff would have the authority to go ahead and grant that waiver. Is that what you're saying?
Grant the waiver for the stormwater management plan, but not grant a waiver for the erosion control plan, you'd still require the erosion control plan.
Yeah, so maybe the way to handle that then is under uh under paragraph C, it would read, the planning board authorizes town staff to waive requirements of stormwater management. Or in so long as the following criteria are met, and then we maybe maybe add another criteria. So, you know, it's the four that we have listed there, but you're gonna add another one that's basically articulates. You know, if in the opinion of the town staff, you know, the, you know, the 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 temporary. Impact. I don't know what, I I'm not coming up with the language, I apologize, but but I I would, I would probably add another criterion there that achieves what I think. What I think I understand you're trying to achieve. We can, I can try to work up some language around that if you'd like.
I'll throw some language at that, but it'll be, it'll be after number two, it'll say, or. And then and then talk about the permanent versus temporary. Um and still require the erosion control plan.
I I think, go ahead. Yeah, I think, I think, yeah, I think I I think uh item C four should remain that any waiver. That the town staff is authorized to give.
Yes.
Um a condition of that waiver is thou shalt submit erosion and sediment control plan.
Okay.
But number four takes care of that, so if you wanna add a one, a two, and then slip in a three there. Then I think maybe that makes sense.
I don't think we wanna put the town staff. This uh issuing any type of a waiver. Or. Allowing someone to exceed. The thresholds, because. It it could get personal, it could get personal from from someone saying, Carol, or. Someone else in the town staff is doing it cuz they do or don't like, I mean, there's all sorts of ramifications here, I think that. We've got to figure out a way to be able to bring that back to the board to say. If you want that threshold exceeded, then you better go back to the board, because it's an elective board, it's not, it's not a hired staff, it's not, it's it. You know, then the board makes that decision. It's it's not, it's, it it just seems to me to be opening up a can of worms. That to 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 put staff in that position. And I don't know how we can address that differently, but. And I was wondering, OJ, if if maybe along the lines of what you were saying, if we could do a maybe a post in a. And a pre-construction option. That was a, if you're gonna put your water and sewer and utilities, then you can do that. Under and 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 get it received and stuff like that, and then you go and do your your main part of the lot. And maybe there's a, you know, maybe there's a a roughen point where where they can do that, do that, and that comes off of that. That final lot when they're building the house, I don't know if that makes it any easier or not, but if it, it was just a thought I had that maybe someone said, okay. I mean, you have an option to go in for the whole thing, or if if you want, you can say, you you can do your utilities and your 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 curb cut. Into your into your lot and we'll we'll take that off and that will probably reduce them underneath the required amount anyway. Which is the fifty thousand, you know, fifteen thousand or fifty percent of the lot, just just another way of looking at it was all.
So Paul, to 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 address that particular thing, that that's what, that's what um D E, again, looking at it from a state state regulatory standpoint. D E S would just look at that as phasing, so when you do a, when you do a major subdivision and you do it in different phases. D E S does not say, okay, you can disturb, you know, you know, phase one, and therefore you won't trigger a permit and then. Get that all established and built out, and then you can do, go on to phase two, and that's gonna be a separate permit. That's not how it works, uh you know, you got, you you need to submit on the total project, the total. That's not how it works. Uh, you know, you got, you, you need to submit on the total project and the total development. And that's the basis of the regulatory framework. It isn't, you know, do this one piece, get it all buttoned up and then do the next piece and then. Each one is a separate calculation. It's not, it's not how it works. And I wouldn't recommend that you do that because if you, again, if, you know, a lot of these lots are, you know, you're, in order to get a sewer service in, they're, they're. They're, you know, uh, clearing trees, taking them down. And that section of the lot has gone from woods to lawn and that's more runoff coming off of that site when you do that. So whether you restored or not, you're increasing the runoff from the site under a scenario like that.
Then again, there's no law, you can't stay, you can't clean the, the trees off your land, make a lawn either. Figure that what you're doing steps. And years past, Paul, we've done exactly what you just suggested. We tell them you can put the infrastructure in. Once it's in, you have no guarantee the town will accept it when you put the lots. You put it in at your own risk. We've done that for some lot development.
Yeah, I mean, I do like having the rules and regulations to go by. I just. And I agree with you, you know. On the principle of what you're saying about how you wanna proceed with that. But I don't think that the staff should be the one to do it, because I think it just opens up everything.
Well, you have the safety valve anyway to go to the planning board. So for instance. Um, you know, if I had a question, like, should I or shouldn't I, I'd just flip it to you.
Well, I mean, right, I understand that, but I'm saying that it. Small towns, small people, small minds, everybody thinks differently. It's, it's better to ha, to have something that's going to be giving a. Changing a threshold or to be exceeding it or not exceeding it to go to a, a. An elected board, I think. Personally, I just think it takes that, it takes that, you don't like anything out of it. Or we did this over here, we didn't do that over there. And I, I, I truly think that. I mean, you hear it now in town. So, I mean, it's, it's there already. And I don't think it needs to get any worse, I can tell you that.
Well, if, if I could just address that, I mean, I, I mean, this is a, this is a recommendation from town staff to the planning board. So the town staff is recommending that, you know, that you do this. So I don't. You know, I don't wanna speak for Carol, but I, I, I think. I think that, you know. I certainly think that there's enough professional judgment sitting at the table at the technical review team to make these determinations. That's my opinion. But if you wanna leave it in the hands of the planning board, that's fine, but this is, what this is, what this recommendation is. Is trying to find a way forward to expedite the land use permit process. That's what this is for. So if we get into those scenarios where we think we're, it's our judgment that. Going slightly over the fifty percent is not a big deal and it's not going to. Um, it's not gonna adversely affect any downgrading property owners. It's gonna meet the intent, their, the proposal's gonna meet the intent of the stormwater management ordinance. It gives just a little bit more. Window for us to get that particular applicant through the permitting process. Cause we understand that the development community is, has a lot of angst about how long permits take to get through the process. This is a way. To expedite that process. That's why this recommendation is in front of you, you folks.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think the, the. Reason that we're sitting here talking about this is because of the feedback that we've received from. Uh, homeowners, developers, et, et cetera, over the, 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 the process. Um, and, and the frustration with the, the timeline and the debt, that. Closeness of being just barely open, I'll have to go through all of this.
Right.
I don't see, I guess I just, I, I. I don't have the professional knowledge to sit here as a board member and make the judgment on this, all right? I'm gonna rely on Carol and Ray to, to do it. So we're gonna sit here. I'm gonna listen to Carol, I'm gonna listen to Ray, and I'm gonna do what they say, because I, I don't know water flows and runoff calculations and all of that stuff. I, I don't know why we, we can't trust them. And, and when you say that people are getting upset, people are gonna get upset with the decision, no matter who makes it. All right, and it's gonna be more about how it affects them than how the decision is made. All right, the, the complaint we're getting now is the slowness of the process, not the unfairness of the process. And, and I, I just. You know, I just disagree with you. I, I think that Ray and Carol are the people who are most knowledgeable and able to make this decision. And I, and I just don't see it being a problem. Giving them the authority to do it, do their job.
Like those, the two that we came before you for waivers. You know, everybody felt comfortable, every, all the staff felt comfortable with that. Um, you know, the, I think we thought that, you know, turning the house around so that it was a mirror image of what was there. Redirecting the water into the, um, town water, uh, stormwater drainage system. Um, you know, it's a small lot, it's a very steep, you know, very steep lot. You know, there were issues with what would be normally required. I mean, that. It just felt like that was something that, you know, Ray could recommend and it was gonna work. And we didn't have to go through the whole hearing process, the, you know, the notice, the. You know, cause it, that adds like another month. Um, to those things.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, Ray.
Okay, and, and the way, the way we're, what we're proposing here is. If, if an applicant comes before us and they show us a site plan. And they say, okay, well, we're gonna disturb, you know, fifty-one, fifty-two percent. Um, and if in our opinion, if they make some modifications to. Um, it could be building location, driveway location, just like what we did with, um, Mr. Galan on his property up on Valley View. We made some suggestions to their consultant about how to make that work. We're gonna just, we're gonna hold them to the fifty percent. It's not, this is not just to, you know, increase the threshold up to fifty-five percent. This is only for those situations. Where we just don't, we just think the impact is de minimis. And if we can just grant them a little bit of grace, we can actually get them through the permit process rather than, as Carol said. Waiting them on to get in front of the planning board, notifying the butters and going through that lengthy process. So, um, again, the intent isn't to change the threshold. The intent is to adhere and make sure that the storm management. Uh, ordinance, uh, the intent and the purpose of it is being, um, is being honored. In all cases. Well, I mean, if you can't, if you can't. Then our recommendation could be for the applicant to go to the planning board and, you know, get a, get a full-blown waiver.
We, we wish they had the option of doing now, but, I mean, you know, one of the comments that you've made, Ray, is that the. I mean, our, our process that we have is currently working. We're not having a lot of flooding and, and stuff like that. So, I mean. It leaves me to ask the question, uh, if, if it's working. Maybe we could, why not? Increase some of the limits to say like twenty thousand square feet instead of fifteen thousand. Why, why not do that and see if. See, see if that would cure a lot of the concerns that, that people have. And, and it's not just. It's not just whether they can get a permit. It's the, again, it's the cost. It's the complexity of it. It's the, I mean, you know, these people are paying a ton of money to do that. So if they don't need to do that. Go to that extreme, why make them go through it? If we can increase the, the thresholds. And I mean, just.
What about the, the houses up on South Peak and the landing that is so steep?
Those lots are all less than twenty thousand, most of them are less than twenty thousand.
Yeah, you, you're basically eliminating it in all the areas where we most need it. If we're gonna go up to, instead of going up to twenty thousand square feet, let's do it by gradient. Anything, anything that's, that's flat, you don't need it.
And I haven't read through all, all of what they offer, but they did offer some based on grade and soils type, you know, but. I think that there's a lot of frustration out there with the stormwater management plan and I.
Well, what's the, well, what's the fresh, the, I thought the frustration was the timeliness of executing the, you know, the land use permits. Getting folks through the process. I don't, there isn't anybody who has been denied a permit. Under the stormwater management ordinance, we always have found a way. To meet the intent of the stormwater management ordinance.
That, that, that is a fact. I, I don't think there's been anyone, anyone, um, refused. But I think, and, and again, you're right, that the concerns that have come is that the length of time it takes to be able to get through that process. And. Is, is it because of reviewing time or is it because of, you know. Our, Ray, I don't know what your turnaround time is when you get stuff and look at it, but, you know. Sometimes we've gone to you and you said, I'm busy, I'll, I'll try to get to it, or Carol said Ray's busy. You know, so maybe that's part of the issue too, you know, maybe we. I don't know what your turnaround time is on some of these things. May, maybe that's. Maybe that's something that we should take a look at.
Worse in most places. This is pretty quick compared to Russell.
You don't have to do anything just because I, I'm asking, you, you really don't.
We're talking about making it quicker by making it longer. I just don't understand. Let's not do anything. If we're gonna make it longer, let's just not do anything.
I mean, you know, you gotta.
Right.
There's gonna be.
So if, if I could just speak to the threshold, so if you, you know, if you, the, the bottom line is this. If you, you can in, increase your thresholds, but why are you doing that? So if you're increasing your thresholds in order to make some folks not have to. You know, comply with the stormwater management ordinance, will their permits get done quicker? Sure. But you're gonna have more runoff coming off of South Peak, Forest Ridge, because you increased the threshold. So you're increasing the amount of stormwater runoff. If you, so just, if you do, I'm not saying you should or shouldn't, but if you're gonna go from fifteen to twenty thousand, you're gonna have more water. That's just a fact.
But, no, you're right. But we don't know what that, that, we don't know what that threshold is. That's gonna create the problem. Is it, I mean, obviously it's not the fifteen thousand, cause that's where we're at now, but. Is it something a little more than that that would give the flexibility to be able to just, um, come in and get their. Their permits a lot easier without, I mean. Huge, I'm just saying. Why don't we grow a little bit and see what it's, see what it will do? I mean, if we hit that point, we can always go back. It's nothing says we can't go back, just like we can't go forward.
But, but why? Working. It's, the thing is, we've got something that's working, it's just not working efficiently. Let's work on the efficiency, not, not the, the. Let's not try to, you know, change that number until we screw up. I mean, that's. It's not a good way to operate.
I think if you increase, say you went to twenty thousand. The homes are gonna get bigger.
The problems.
So you're gonna have more impervious area on the lots, you can have more runoff. Whereas if you have a way of examining the soils on flat lots and determining. This person can go over by a certain percentage because the lot is gonna absorb it. Or, you know, like you were talking about waivers, all this other stuff, but I think. Look at the South Peak Agreement, not to bring up a sore subject, but they have, they have an agreement for a certain size home, they, they're bigger. So. If you change.
That's a.
It's human nature, if you're gonna give me an inch, I'm gonna take a mile. But if you increase the impervious area or the percentage or whatever, the home's gonna get bigger. On small lots.
And I would, I, I think Ron makes an excellent point because basically, you know, when we do our reviews. Again, we get, they, they take it right up to the limit. They, they'll go up to the four, they'll go up to forty-nine point five, forty-nine point nine percent.
I mean, some of them.
Yeah, some of them. So they take it, they take it right to the limit. So what is that telling us? That's telling us that if you increase the thresholds, they're gonna take them to the limit. It's, it's gonna be another five thousand square foot of surface on each one of those lots. That's gonna generate more runoff, those lots. That will affect, that potentially could affect downstream property owners. Your public infrastructure, et cetera, et cetera.
Well, for the guy that's gonna go over by a little bit, I think if we can have some tools in the toolbox to be able to. Move in through the process quicker. But not actually moving the goalposts. We'd probably accomplish. Mission.
But we're not, right, we're not doing it. And if, and if we're gonna do something like that, then we should be putting timelines on when these approvals will be, will happen. Is it gonna take three days, six days, a month? I mean, that, that, someone should be able to submit an application. And have a reasonable answer as to how long does this take?
It's called step.
Okay, so can I, can I just weigh in here? Uh, cause I can, I think I can. Be a kind of a observer from the outside looking in. So, uh, I had a conversation with the folks at the, the, the construction management firm at the Hampton Inn. There's eight items that they haven't done yet on, on the checklist. And we're ready to issue the land use permit. But we can't, because they haven't crossed all the Ts and dotted all the Is. That happens a lot. We, we get applications in and Carol, if I'm speaking out of turn to say so, but. We get applications in where they're just not complete and we spend a lot of time working with the applicant. Trying to get them to a complete application. And, and when it comes to reviews, we'll complete a review, we'll get that done in five days. But we won't hear from the other consulting firm on the, on the developer side of the table for three or four weeks. Because they're busy. And they don't have time to do that job. So that, those things should be taken into consideration when we're looking at durations on the land use permit process. And my, my opinion is focusing on the process and, and do the things that maybe you can do internally. To expedite that process before you, you move forward to changing ordinance. Cause that's what I'm hearing. It's the, the pinch point is the timeline to get. Through the permit process.
Well, I was looking at one of the applications and I decided to count the emails back and forth between me and the applicant about. He's asking questions, and what if I do this, and what if I do that, and, you know, I've already got an application in. I had over fifty emails back and forth with this person. And it's not unusual to have, you know, twenty-five or thirty. Um, this happened to be, you know, over fifty.
Was it for us, ju-just a regular single family home?
Yes.
But that, you know, we've always said. That, you know, your time shouldn't be guiding these application applicants through every part of the process. It's, you know, they have a responsibility to hire a recorber or an architect or someone professional.
They did.
To, well. Then, then you should, you should suggest that they go back to them and, and. They can look at the ordinance and make their application the way it's supposed to be, so town staff doesn't have to do that. I mean. Ron talked about the, the things at South Peak, the houses at South Peak that have gotten bigger. The reason they got bigger is because somewhere along the line. In the planning board, town staff, current administration, someone may, didn't look at the, all the parts, moving parts here.
We did look at it and we got advice from Peter Malia. And Peter Malia said it was not in the notice of decision. That there was absolutely nothing that I could do about limiting the size or anything. It didn't matter that it was in the master plan. He said it needed to be in the notice of decision and it was not in the notice of decision. So for, you know, we, I brought it up, the first year I was here, the second year I was here, the third year I was here.
See, I was not.
So I've been here nine years now. And now they're saying that we can pay attention to that.
So I, I think we're getting way off track here. We're here to talk about the stormwater management act, not, not. How Carol responds to fifty emails and why it's a single family. Ray gave us some, some input here. Uh, I added a, a, a comment. I, I think we should either. Take the time and read this and think about it, or just decide that we don't wanna make the process faster and just, just leave it where it is. I, I, I am strongly opposed to expanding or increasing the, the thresholds across the board. If we can't give two professional, of, of the, the staff, professional people, a, a ten percent. Ability to, uh, give a waiver, then, then let's just make people wait, just make them wait.
I think that there's, I think if you're gonna do that and give that, that. Waiver or. The percentage of the threshold increase to the staff, that, that there should be some representation from the planning board on that technical review committee. And I talked to Ray about it last week, he agreed with that, but I haven't heard him say anything about it tonight.
Well, here's, it, what I, what I. What I meant, what I mentioned last, last time was that if, you know, if there's a member of the planning board who can. You know, um, and I think I even said who can respond within like twenty four hours to an email or a phone call about, hey, this is what we're going to do, do we have a yes or a no? And the answer is, here are the circumstances, we can get an immediate decision, that's a yes. That's great, but if it's gonna bog down the land use, if it's gonna slow down the process, because, you know, the, the planning board member isn't available. We have to schedule, he wants, he or she wants to schedule a meeting. Then my recommendation is don't do that. I mean, this, this was just to. Give the planning board representation in the decision-making process, but if it's slow, actually slows down the process. The intent here in this recommendation is to expedite the land use permit process, that's what the intent is, so. Anything that slows it down would not be a recommendation that I would make to the planning board. So, that's the context that I said was a good idea.
I don't say it's slowing it down, I mean, you take a look at. A lot of the committees that we have from the CIP, I mean, it's all, is that, there's a. A representation of different. Board select.
Right.
Whatever, a- and, and this should be no different. And I think this is more important to have. Have it because. Having a. I don't care who it is, someone from the planning board on there. Would, would do, go a long ways, I think, in the general public. Perception of. Oh, this is Ron.
Town, town manager is on it. It's the, you know.
Yeah, the town manager, that's a good idea.
Well, he is on it.
He's already. Works director.
And public works director, the fire chief and code enforcement officer. The planner and the town engineer. And then Lisa. Who's our, you know, my assistant.
She's done any construction, braggled the site plans.
Well, she was a property manager for hotels.
And it's not the same thing as building a building.
I didn't say it was.
I think Carol makes a good point. All, all the people that she listed there have expertise in different areas. And the way the TRT is working now, we, we, we talk about. These things, and we come to a collective conclusion about. And it'd be the same thing for, for this, this particular. Policy. We would collectively come to a decision as to whether or not. You know, we, we say, okay, we'll give them an extra five percent. If you think you need a planning board member to weigh in. I don't know, I don't know what additional expertise you need at the table, is my point, I guess. Other than the town staff. But if you think you need it, then I guess you, you need it.
Really, I think really. A minimal percentage over is really all that's needed anyway. Cause, you know, what we've seen at South Peak is the. Nation drain and sewer line connections. Are normally the stumbling block for adding to the impervious area. Those on a few of them, right, right?
Correct. And there's, there, there was a couple there that would have been great if we could just let them. Instead of, because they show three feet of trench width. There's no way they're gonna get that sewer service in, you know, three foot trench, even their own contractor says it. But they can't move their limit anywhere else on the site, it would be great if we could say, okay, you know. We'll give you an extra five feet to get that sewer line in, because we know you're gonna disturb that area anyway. And here are the conditions upon which we'll grant this. You know, this mini waiver, for lack of a better term.
That, 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 that particular application there probably went eight weeks to ten weeks longer than it needed to, if we could have done that.
Right. So those are the circumstances we're talking about here.
Can I ask a question to be there, Carol or, or Ray? Um, if we, if we change the meaning of disturbance. As you're proposing, that needs to go before town meeting and be voted on, because that's part of land use ordinance, okay? I understand that. If, if we decide to give town staff this authorization to give waivers under these things. Is that part of the ordinance, or is that part of the, of approval? Procedures for the town that's, that's not written in the ordinance? In other words, we.
I think when we talked about it before, we were talking about it as a policy, but I don't know that we specifically asked Peter that question.
No, no, well, that's why we had Peter review this memo, because, uh, the question I put to Peter is, within the context of the stormwater management ordinance, does the planning board have the authority to grant? Certain limited. Waiver authorization to town staff, and so. He signed off on the memo, he said it looks great. So I'm assuming he's made, that he's rendered that decision, so it might behoove us to go back and make sure that. Double, just double check with them to make sure that that is in fact the case, so this is more of a policy than it is. Ordinance, it's the planning board telling town staff. You have, you have the green light to do this within. You know, within the context of, you know, the narrative that you see in front of you, or some other version of it.
And then here's my, my recommendation, maybe we don't wanna board on this tonight, but. That we accept. This new procedure for a period of twelve months. And if the planning board sees that this, this town staff has made. Um. A, a questionable or erroneous or biased decisions, we will revoke this. If after twelve months we see that it is efficient and it works, we continue it, but we will take a vote in twelve months that will either say yes, we continue it, or no, we don't.
We go for that.
Is that fair?
Yeah. No, Jay, you said earlier, she was brought into the quote. But a temporary disturbance. We will make that into an order here.
Uh, the discussion was that after point two, we would put an or, um, and talk about a, a temporary disturbance. Um. But a provision would be made, if, if the permanent disturbance. Was under the threshold, the temporarily put it over, that this board would have the right to make the same waiver. Again, still under number four, requiring an erosion control plan. And I'll put the language together for that.
Can you repeat what you just said prior to that, though?
That we, we grant this, and again, I'll write up the two A section, so we can't vote on it tonight. But we, we grant this for a period of twelve months from the day we vote on it. And then the meeting following the twelve month period, we come back and as a board, vote whether to continue it, the process, or change it.
It would just be a five basis point.
Yeah, if they may, if they screw up and they start. Granting waivers that are, that are ridiculous or biased or playing favoritism. Take it away.
Maybe you should extend on that, maybe at least a rep, you know, like a quarterly report of any. Instances that waiver.
Okay.
And that way you're, that way the board is in the loop. And you'll have the data to back it up with how many permits we issued in the timeframe.
I actually like that.
I like that.
But the, the one thing I will tell you is that. This, the, the stormwater ordinance was adopted at a town meeting. And if we're gonna change any part of it, it may have to go to town meeting, so you may wanna check again.
Check with Peter, but it seems like the definition, the definition is part of the ordinance, it would need to be voted on, but the procedure. Of who enforces it and what, what, you know, what applications and waivers.
I'm okay, I'm okay with yours, as long, your suggestion, as long as Ron's goes along with it. That any, that any variances. Or expansion of the thresholds. There's a report that either comes once a month to the planning board. That says. What, why they were done. And if, if, if they're de minimis or small or something like that, it's just two second conversation, if it's not. But that's the way we'll be able to track, that, that's a method for tracking it. And I think that's a good, I think that's a good method.
All right, so we're twelve month allowance, um, for this new process. Quarterly reports on all waivers will be presented to the planning board quarterly.
That's fine. All right, that's simple.
I'll write up, I'll write up the two A. In those two provisions. And we run it by Peter to make sure that we don't have to vote on it at a town meeting.
And we're gonna use the ten percent and the fifty five percent as the thresholds for expansion?
I'm leaving all the rest of this the same.
Okay. All right, there you go.
I think, to be quite honest, we're all one big team, I, we just need to communicate well.
Hey, Ray, what I got you? They're talking about high, high load areas, they're not just talking about water, huh? They're talking about. All kinds of things that goes down with it.
Uh, I'm sorry, you, you were breaking up there a bit, I'm.
Uh, you're going after this one.
Yeah, high load areas, that, that's not just. A big charge of water, that's talking, they, they, they're referencing all the kinds of things that go along with it.
Yeah, so, yeah, so the high load areas where they're referencing are, high load areas are areas that will, uh, generate a lot of water quality issues, that's typically. Um, they're not, it's not only, you know, uh, you know, a large volume, high rate, it's also, um, has to do with water quality. So when we look at a high load areas, we're looking usually in urban settings. Um, industrial park, we know that that's a high load area, so. Um, because it's nothing but, you know, roofs and pavement and.
Yeah.
And it's, uh, obviously, you know, there's, there's a lot of contaminants within, within that type of setting that, that need to be addressed, so. Um, so that's what they're probably referencing, I mean, I, I don't know where you read it, what the context was, but that's probably.
Well, thank you. How many permits do you issue in a year?
Um, sometimes over a hundred.
So a quarterly would be like twenty five?
Well, it's kind, they kind of.
James, I'm right, so I, I, I've just taken a look at the numbers, I'll get the, if you should want twenty five permits in a. Throughout a quarter, let's say, um, how many of those would, do you think would be? Um. Requesting a threshold. Expansion.
Well, it's not, it's not necessarily them requesting a threshold expansion, that maybe that, this is. This should be a clarification, so it's not, it's not that they would come to us and say we're requesting a threshold expansion, it would be the town staff who would offer it. That's a big difference. So we're not, we're not saying that, you know, there's, there's, there's new limits. We're saying that. At the town, what you're doing, what we're asking here is to give the town some discretion to say, okay. You're at, you know, fifty two percent, we see no difference in terms of, you know, impact. Stormwater impact, whether you're at fifty two percent or forty nine percent, so we're gonna, we're gonna give you an extra two percent. And go ahead and issue the permit. So it's not. A waiver for, it's something that the town staff can offer.
I, I understand that. So is quarterly? Enough, I mean, how often? Do you think on the depth of review committee, you would offer something like that based on the amount of permits you've seen so far?
Um.
Would be on a regular event, or would it be, you don't think very often?
No, I don't think it's gonna be very often.
Yes.
I think invariably what we do is when we work with the consulting firms, we, we're, we're able to find a solution that, you know, maybe they didn't see or they didn't think about. That, um. That, that can address and keep within the limits that they need to keep in, within.
And they still, they still have an option if. If they. Think they want a waiver to come in, ask the planning board for a waiver, right?
Yes, absolutely, that's still on the table, if they wanna come into the planning board and say, hey, listen, I wanna, I wanna, I wanna, I wanna take up the whole lot.
Right.
I'll put in a stormwater management facility, so. I'm coming in for a waiver, they can certainly do that.
All right. Well, I guess we're. We've made some progress, I like that.
Yeah, my question was, will we supply to households or also commercial residents for twenty percent?
No, commercial comes completely underneath a different review process.
This is single.
This is single family homes.
Okay, it's good, they, cause they want state losses, hundreds of thousands.
This is single family homes.
Um, just saying, I have some friends from, uh. Austin, just before the big freeze, the front of their house burned. And then they got froze out, they were in a motel for months, and they still don't have a permit, they can't do a thing to their damn house. Nothing, it was a long time.
I don't know when that was, when was that?
Well, it froze in the winter, it never gets that cold down there. So just before the place froze, it burnt, huh?
You're talking now, Boston, right?
No, Austin.
Texas, Austin, Texas.
They had that big freeze down.
Oh, right, right.
Yeah, and just before the freeze, somehow the front of their house caught fire. And they don't have a permit for either one of them yet, they, they can't live in their house.
Won't be a bad.
Are we all, are we all set with Ray?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Ray.
Thanks, Ray.
You're welcome.
Thanks for having me.
Don't get nervous.
Let's calm it.
We need to do minutes, we didn't do them at the beginning.
You realize that the largest city without any planning is only here, Houston, Texas? You don't have a planning board. She's a planning board source, but I'll make it much.
Can we go to the April, I mean, sorry, August twenty fifth minutes?
I got it right here.
All right, on, on line six fifty eight.
Line six fifty eight?
Wow. It's a lot of yak and that name, isn't it?
Okay.
It just refers to this finding of facts number fifteen. I believe that was part of the presentation that the engineers. Gave, but, but that's not referenced anywhere, if you either reference it or attach it. Would be good. See if I can attach it. Okay, uh, we're ready to move on, eight eleven? The high pressure zone includes. It should say all of. Hemlock Drive and a section of Crooked Mountain Road.
Okay, the high pressures on includes all of Hemlock Drive and a section of Crooked Mountain. Yeah.
All right, and then.
Wait, I gotta mark it here, okay. Hold it over so I can find it, okay.
Number, line nine ninety five?
Okay.
It should say where the owner.
Okay, where the owner?
Yep, would put a cement pad down.
Okay, where the owner would put a cement. Had down with water and sewer hookups and cross out the other stuff. He wants to have some tremendous.
Wait, what? No, no, leave it all, just the owner was spelled wrong, owner was spelled wrong, and just add the word pad. Everything else, everything else stays.
One, 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 over. Okay.
Anybody have anything else?
Is this the one that?
Lewis Campbell.
Is this one that would we approve the? Thing is de minimis?
We didn't approve, we just kind of.
They said the move is where the move is probably. We're the hotel, for the Hampton Inn.
Um.
The Hampton Inn before this part.
Well, this is, this is not the one, I don't think that we were. Looking at the, the, whether it was de minimis, the changes that, uh. Presented by OPIC Construction, is this the one?
No, this is not the one.
This is not the one that they.
Oh, in the Hampton Inn, yeah, David Sherburne and Berry Stone.
They're looking in here for the one. Right, so this is right, list the de minimis it is, okay, so I didn't see anything in here.
Okay, it starts on page ten.
Right, I gotta read, yeah, you're right, Carol, what is that, and then it goes down through. Talks about changes in footprint, five truck access, conditions of approval. But. OJ had made a motion in here that we approved this. And that.
As de minimis? As de minimis, page eighteen.
Page eighteen. Line one?
Six ninety one, line.
Staff, can I, so we can just land this permit, right? All in favor, yep, that's the one I was looking for. I'm fine with it.
I'll second. With September eighth.
On page eleven, that someone was me.
Page eleven?
Yeah. So I brought it up and Ray commented on it. Other than that, I'll make most to approve, does it matter?
Give me a second.
I will abstain, I was not at the meeting.
No.
What's that? Right, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second. Any objections, are you gonna bring the changes to the next meeting, so we can?
I'll send them out before the next meeting.
Okay, awesome.